So one, everyone please stand for the pledge will be led by, sorry, Councilmember Noble.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Barbara Rose has been marked with an excused absence and all other members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited if you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar. Please so indicate by filling out a speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48 hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics, as your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this council meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Public comment closed session, this is the time and place for the general public to address the governing board on matters on the closed session agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48 hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, any requests to speak in closed session?
I do have one, Mr. Asa. I'm not... Are you speaking on item one? Are you speaking on item?
Welcome, Mr. Asa.
Hello, how you guys doing? Well, I've been here too many times, way too many times. I just want to tell you guys, I've tried over and over since 2019 to get things settled quietly, just, you know, do it properly. But you guys don't seem to understand that accountability lies in your laps. Because of two officers and the city manager, I've lost out a lot. A lot of money, a lot of time, anger, issues, I mean, physically, mentally, everything. But I want you guys to hear something. I have something for you, okay?
A police officer lying to a federal officer can be prosecuted under 18 U.S.C. Subsection 1001. This federal law makes it a crime to knowingly and willfully make a false statement or represent...
This, this is on the agenda item, Mealan?
This is the thing, I've been pushed to the side too many times, way too many times.
I, I understand.
I, no, no, you don't understand. You're telling me that the DA's got this little thing with them. That's all fine with me. What about what I and me and my fiancée has endured all the damages? Not only to my driving record, but driving security...
I'm going to ask you to come back to open session, public comment, we will let you speak on it there.
I don't want to come back. I want you to listen to the last of the thing and I'm walking away.
I, I can't allow it.
Guys, if you guys want to sit there and listen, that's up to you.
Mr. Asa, you're not speaking.
But it is a federal offense to give them false information. And I have documentation stating that they did false information to a federal, a federal officer.
I understand, but that's not the item agenda as right now, Mr. Asa.
The agenda, this agenda garbage to me because I'm not leaving.
Thank you, Mr. Asa.
That's why my T-shirt says, "You're crazy if you think I'm walking away."
Thank you, Ms. Asa. I'm going to have them turn off your mic now.
Go ahead, turn it off. I don't care.
Remember that, federal crime, lying to a federal officer.
Any more requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
We have no more comment.
Okay, with that, vote to go into closed session. I'll call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
City Attorney, may we please have a report of closed session?
Yes, thank you Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session regarding the Milan versus the City of Barstow case, provided direction regarding settlement of the case and the particulars of that will be available upon request once finalized. Otherwise, took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. So at 7:00 PM, I call this meeting for April 21st to order. Everyone, please stand for invocation and we will have invocation by Pastor Mike Smith of Beth Me Christian Fellowship.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Councilman Mills. Philippians, Chapter 2. Starting now with verse 2 says, "Fulfill ye my joy, that ye be like-minded, having the same love, being of one accord, of one mind; let nothing be done through strife or vain glory, but in loneliness of mind that each esteem other better than themselves." Let's pray our hearts. Father God, we just come to you this morning, this afternoon. Father God, we just pray for these council members, Lord. We pray for each and every governmental staff member here, Father God, in Barstow, Lord. We pray, Lord, that everything go to glorify you, Father God. I pray, Lord, that you just watch over and guide and keep each and every one of them as they talk tonight and onward forward, Father God. We just love you, honor you, we praise you, and we give you all glory in Jesus' holy, precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Would you mind staying there and leading us in our pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem Rose has been marked with an excused absent for tonight's meeting and all other members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited if you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any items on the consent calendar. Please so indicate by filling out a request to speak card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are needed, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics. As your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Review and approval of the agenda. This is the time for members of the governing board to call for rearranging the order of the agenda, adding items or removing items from the agenda, or removing items from the consent calendar for discussion and/or separate action. Items may only be added to the agenda as allowed by state law, including Government Code, Section 54954.2 subdivision B, allowing emergency items to be added by majority vote and allowing items that arose to the city's attention after the agenda posting deadline, but which require immediate action, to be added by a two-thirds vote of the council members present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, a unanimous vote of those members present. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on -- I'm sorry, we have presentations and -- I'm sorry, motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. Please note, we are going to table the presentation number two for the Molinotos. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Okay, and I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve the agenda, polling item two, passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item three. A presentation proclamation for Donate Life California and recognition of DMV Donate Life Month, and our recommended action is to present the presentation to Donate Life California and recognition of the DMV Donate Life California Month. If I could have the council step to the front? If I could have the council step to the front? Okay, we have Terry here representing the Donate Life. So the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And whereas more than 103,000 individuals nationwide and more than 23,000 in California are currently on the national organs transplant waiting list and an average of 17 die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donating organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas a single individual's donation of a heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, or small intestines can save up to eight lives. And whereas donations of tissue can save and heal lives of more than 75 others. And whereas organ donors saved more than 46,000 lives last year. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age and medical conditions. Whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish-speaking, www.don.VI.DACalifornia.org. And whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation may visit www.LivingDonationCalifornia.org. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Barstow in recognition of National Donate Life Month hereby declare the month of April 2025 in the City of Barstow as DMV Donate Life Month. We urge all residents of the City of Barstow in California to recognize the importance of donating organs and tissue to save lives and encourage them to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card at the DMV. It is a sign and seal this day by the full city council here in Barstow. And did you have something to say?
Hello and thank you. Thank you for honoring Donate Life Month for the month of April, which is so important to me because if you see this photo here that I'm carrying, this is Maria, and she is my donor. She saved my life. I had pulmonary fibrosis at the age of 40, and the disease that I had is incurable and a terminal disease. So I was waiting in the hospital for a life-saving double lung transplant. And on June 24, 2015, I received that special gift. My donor, who was only 21, who had passed away, donated her lungs and her heart to another person who was in need of a heart transplant. So every time I take a breath, I think of my donor, and I'm so grateful and blessed that I'm here 10 years as of June 24th. So 10 years post double lung transplant. And I'm so grateful, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, Sheri. Yes. Okay, continue on. Item four, we have another presentation. Presentation from Desert Mana Food Recovery and Distribution. And our recommended action is a presentation only. And this is by... Mr. Batishi. Welcome, Mr. Batishi.
Thank you very much, City Council. My name is Gene Batishi. I'm speaking on behalf of Desert Mana this evening. And the presentation has more to do, has more to do with what Desert Mana does with what's called edible food recovery. Just to give everyone an idea, Desert Mana currently picks up approximately eight tons of food within the Barstow community. This is, it's called Edible Food Recovery. It's a program through the state of California with Senate Bill 1383 in which there's a mandate for these municipalities to divert what would be edible food that can be used to serve, serve the underserved. Edible food would include items such as, say it's a bakery item from Walmart, and it has a sell-by date by April 20th. They cannot sell that item per their company rules on April 21st. However, the food is still, is still edible. So Desert Mana comes and picks up these foods and redistributes them to various nonprofits within the Barstow community. And how they do this is, some of it is through the weekly pop-up market with the produce bakery and perishable items that is done on a weekly basis from the Desert Mana warehouse. Also, Desert Mana redistributes food to various nonprofits in the community. Probably the most, the most visible one would be with New Life Fellowship for their Tuesday night feeding kitchen. Many people are aware that one of the, I guess you'd call it the main entree item, is fried chicken that Desert Mana picks up from Kentucky Fried Chicken. It's a, we have a contract with another organization, so we pick up the chicken and deliver it to New Life Fellowship for their Tuesday night feedings. Through the various programs, we feed approximately 1,500 individuals on a monthly basis. As I mentioned before, 16,000 pounds or eight tons of food. Now, this is food that would, would have otherwise ended up in the landfill. And that's part of what SB 1383 is about, is to, is to avoid putting things in the landfill that could be recycled or reused elsewhere. Up until a couple of years ago, it was in what was called Tier One. SB 1383 in a Tier One category. And Tier One had to do with the larger, larger companies such as Walmart, Food for Less. And they were the ones that were mandated to be part of an edible food recovery program or landfill diversion. Starting technically in 2024, we entered into another phase called Tier Two. Tier Two is not fully implemented yet in regards to either with the City of Barstow or with the state of California because they're still working on the guidelines. Tier Two would then start applying to restaurants that are over 5,000 square feet or have a seating capacity of 250 or more. That's just two examples. So if your restaurant falls into one of those categories, you have to start working into the edible food recovery program. There's one restaurant in particular that I do work with, and it's not exactly the same, doesn't work out the same as, for example, when we pick up from Walmart or Food for Less. It could be they had a limited promotional item, and there was a special sauce that they had used for it or a particular item. That promotion is over. So rather than, again, the leftovers ending up in the trash, we're able to recover and use it as, distribute it as part of our pop-up market. We also pick up excess from Marine Corps Logistics Base Barstow as well as National Training Center Fort Irwin. During the pandemic, Desert Mana was the only entity in the high desert. I'm not sure if anyone may remember the, on a weekly basis, I call it the 30, Farmer's to Family, 35-pound box that was provided to Desert Mana. Approximately 1,300 cases on a weekly basis, 1,300 boxes. And Desert Mana did not distribute all of them. Again, we worked with our partners to be able to have distribution on the west side of town along with Yermo, Yermo, Daggett, Newberry Springs. And also during the pandemic, Desert Mana continued to deliver the, we were a conduit for USDA commodities to get out to Yermo, Daggett, Newberry Springs. During the pandemic, we continued with our weekly emergency food box distribution, which is on Saturdays. Also in January of 2021, when the city had, when there was a citywide distribution in January of 2021, the food that was provided for that came from Desert Mana. Talking a little bit about SB 1383. There are several goals for this project. One is when you have the, the food that goes into the landfill, it creates methane, methane gas, so it's part of a methane emission reduction. Of course, 1383 mandates that at least 20% of surplus edible food is recovered for human consumption by 2025. I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure exactly where those, where that figure lands within Barstow right now, but through your solid waste department, they have, they have those numbers because they get the figures from the state as well. Infrastructure and funding. The way in which Desert Mana had started with the edible food recovery program was through a grant with CalRecycle. And actually, that started in 2018. The grant itself had finished in 2021. So even though the grant funding had completed from the state of California, Desert Mana has continued to run the program. Part of the grant was, Desert Mana was able to purchase a refrigerated box truck. Unfortunately, this purchased the box truck in 2018, and then the California Air Resource Board came into play. And they had a mandate starting in 2023. Any diesel vehicles that were built before 2010 could not be registered in the state of California. Unfortunately, our truck was 2009. So that truck is currently sitting in, sitting in our parking lot. We start it every couple of days just to make sure the engine's running. But with that, with that box truck was able, enabled Desert Mana to improve its ability to serve the surrounding communities such as Newberry, Newberry Springs, Daggett, Yermo, Baker, and Baker as well. Also because of that truck, we're able to send support over to Trona when they had the earthquake in 2019. So the truck really came in handy. I think some of these I kind of went over a little bit. Yeah, Tier One, like I said, Desert Mana's been doing this since 2018. Again, Tier One covers food distributors, supermarkets and grocery stores, food service providers, and wholesale food vendors. Not all of those apply to, to Barstow, but those were some of the requirements with Tier One. Then as I mentioned about Tier Two, just to give you a better idea of what that encompasses. Hotels with over 200 rooms. Health facilities with over 100 beds. Large events in which there are 2,000 or more individuals for the day. Same with large venues. Large, large education agencies. And I already mentioned about the restaurants. And also state agencies with 200, 250 seats or more. Again, not all of these apply to, or at least not currently to Barstow. Maybe in about 10 years, it will. Now, as I had mentioned, the Desert Mana has been doing, has been providing this service in regards to the edible food recovery, recovering eight tons of food on a monthly basis. And as I previously mentioned, currently, Desert Mana does not receive any county, state, or local funding in assistance to run this particular program. In March of 2025, I'm going to go fast, I got the clock going here. In March 2025, Uncle Recycle came to Barstow to analyze the programs in place within the City of Barstow. Taylor Britt, the City of, City of Barstow Administrative Analysis for Solid Waste, she's got a long title. And Recycling said CalRecycle was impressed with Desert Mana's operation and the way in which we had administered the program as well fulfilling the objections, objectives of SB 1383. A little bit about Desert Mana. Has 39 years of experience as a social service provider to the greater Barstow area. Barstow is identified as a red zone with a higher ratio of at-risk population that require services. Nine seconds left. Funding sources are scarce to nonexistence to maintain the operation at the food bank, and funding is essential in order to continue serving the community.
Thank you, Mr. Batishi. Yeah, your presentation's up, but I do have questions from council, so please stay there. Councilmember Williams.
What kind of, what kind of food are you guys picking up at the military installations? From the mess hall? Or they're, what exactly?
It depends. We, we pick up not only from the commissaries, but also if it's available during rotation. There's so much food that's ordered for the rotation. What's not, what's not used, we pick, we have picked up from there as well.
So whatever they're feeding the troops out in the field, if it's leftover, you guys will pick that up?
Correct. And they've, they've actually have gotten better at it. So there's not as much residual because it used to be a lot of shelf-stable items. But now they're, lack of better word, recycling it or using it for the next rotation.
How does the public get ahold of you to pick up food besides the nonprofits?
Well, as far as for the general public, we have, we do the pop-up market on a weekly basis. It's posted on the Desert Mana social media page as well as the Facebook page, Feed Barstow. In general, Feed Barstow is a great resource. If someone is looking for, that needs to have food picked up because it's not only for Desert Mana, but as well as the various nonprofits in the community post up there as well.
And just for those who are listening, what's, what's the address for that? To where to pick up the food?
Oh, the address, I'm sorry, 2410 Armory Road. It's the part of Armory behind Walmart heading towards the marine base. It'll be the last building on the right.
And the last question is for the council, for staff, is can we, can we help with the California CARB law of trying to get them an exemption or an extension on, on the CARB?
We can ask our legislators to help work with us to get CARB to either recognize the value of an exemption or otherwise work with them. We don't have the direct power to compel it, but we can certainly move it forward with the ask. And I think that would make sense looking to your colleagues.
Yeah, because I, I got, I was in that same situation with the food trucks, and I, and I got mine.
Yeah, I think we can follow up with CARB.
I think, I think, I think the rule is if it's not driving over so many miles, that you can get an exemption for it.
I'll give Councilmember Williams a second to have staff look into that.
A second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions?
I have no more requests to speak from council. Thank you, Mr. Batishi.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, public comments. This is a time and place for the general public to address the governing board on all matters on the consent calendar. Speakers are asked to limit their comments on the consent items to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on the consent calendar?
We do. Our first speaker is Mr. Ted Wiesma, speaking on item six, which is a resolution accepting title from the state of California.
Welcome, Mr. Wiesma.
Anyway. On six. On the acquisition of this federal slash state parcel. It concerns me that you haven't gone to planning and zoning. To me, it's a very important issue, the acquisition of new property into the city. And it should be clearly identified in the city's plan. And you should clearly have it figured out what the zoning's going to be. And that's why you have the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just if you had issues with rules and policy and sending things back to rules and policy, I think this needs to go to planning and zoning. Because that's why you have the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiesma.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marcia Wiesma, speaking on item five, which is the authorization of the street closure for the safety fair on May 3rd.
Welcome, Ms. Wiesma.
Thank you. I would like to comment on our police department. They have always been wonderful in presenting their spring safety fair for the community, and the children do love it. and the children do love it. My concern is, has the major pothole been repaired by the city maintenance crew that this young child stepped into breaking her leg at the wonderful trunk-or-treat in October? Please have your maintenance staff check to make sure that this has been taken care of. It is a dangerous trip hazard and in the immediate area before this event. I would like a response from our city manager that this has been finished, accomplished, the pothole is taken care of, and we shall have a wonderful spring event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiesma.
We have no more comment on our consent, and with that, I'll go ahead and read.
Yes, please.
Item Five is a resolution authorizing the street closure for the Barstow Police Department Public Safety Fair on May 3rd, 2025. The recommended action is for the city council to approve Resolution 5202-2025. Item Six is a resolution accepting title to parcel number DKA 7490-01-02 from the state of California. The recommended action is staff recommends the city council to, one, adopt Resolution Number 5203-2025, authorizing the mayor and the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement, the direct sale, waive the reading in full, and, two, authorize the city manager to execute the certificate of acceptance once the quitclaim deed is filed and recorded by the state of California, and authorize recordation by the city clerk. And that is the end of the consent calendar. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see, I bring back to council for questions, I see no one, no, Council Hernandez, I'm going to, before you go, I'm going to ask staff to please answer Mr. Wiesma's question. Explain the acquisition of the parcel. Is that going to be you, Mr. Hildreth?
I'll, I'll start, and then I'll kick it to Matthew, or Mr. Summers. The acquisition of the parcel is, it's already got a land use designation, even if it's state-owned, it falls within zoning, it's already been predetermined, and it's on, it's on the zoning map plans on the city's website. So it's already been zoned previously underneath the general plan. Anything that's located in the city limits is already pre-zoned. So that's already been, been done. The reason why this parcel's coming before you tonight for the city to take it is Caltrans, whenever the 15 freeway was built, Caltrans had a blanket right-of-way over that region. They currently do not have it designated to where underneath the 15 freeway is, it shows is the highway. So what, there's, there's a developer that's, you know, has a, an option to purchase all that property through the State Lands Commission. Part of it is for the Caltrans to relinquish that one piece of property down at the, at the bottom, closer towards Main Street and L Street. The reason why that parcel has to come to us is because it's outside of their designation for their, the highway. So once they give that to us, then we, they're able to relinquish the entire overlay of the state highway on all the parcels, which then will make the property developable, developable. Currently, it is not, because it has the, the Caltrans right-of-way across all of those parcels. And I'll, I'll shoot it over to Matthew, or Mr. Summers, for any more clarification.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Hildreth. The additional point to note is, the city does take proposed acquisitions of land in fee or other full-scale acquisitions of land would typically go through the planning commission for review and comment before they come to the city council. Here, this is a very small piece of former right-of-way that the city's acquiring, the, to facilitate the release of that Caltrans easement, as noted. The underlying request from a developer to develop the site will come to the planning commission for review and approval in the usual course, and then, depending on exactly what's proposed, may come to the council if the matter requires rezoning. The developer hasn't finalized any proposals, so I don't yet have details on that front. But that's where we are, in terms of this tiny piece of former right-of-way comes, coming directly to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Hildreth. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, because you've explained it. Isn't this part of old Spanish trails? So there was a special district that was determined for that, this area, that did go before the planning commission.
Yes, ma'am, this, this, this entire area has a specific plan already adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Williams?
Where's the location of this pothole at? And where was the trunk, trunk-or-treat that we were talking about?
I'm going to have to get clarification from Ms. Wiesma. Well, I'll talk to her afterwards, but I remember a citizen coming here, making a comment, but I believe that was up in the neighborhood by the sports park where the gentleman stepped off, or the daughter stepped off the curb in a crack. That's where I recall, but if there's, if there's another incident, then I'll, I'll get with Ms. Wiesma and take care of it.
And I know that one was resolved right away. That was fixed immediately. Okay, I want to make sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. That's all the requests I have to speak from, or questions from council. With that, I'll call for a motion.
So moved to approve? Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote.
And the motion to approve consent passes unanimously.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Discussion, business action of the council? We have none. Okay, so we have non-agenda public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If any special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Mr. Ted Wiesma.
Welcome back, Mr. Wiesma.
Thank you. The concern I have is with code enforcement. I've had many problems in the district that I reside in that are violations of code. And I've reported those violations to code enforcement. And I have to say, probably 90% of them haven't been addressed. I don't even know if they've set up a file on them. And yet, they filed a code enforcement problem against me on an issue which I don't think ever should have been there, because it was not really a problem. It was just that, it was a violation of the letter of the law. And yet, some of the code enforcement issues I've turned in are clear safety violations. Some of them have been going on for two years or more. Trashy parcels that have gone on and on and on and on, and no resolution. I really think there needs to be a meeting between my district representative, city manager, and the code enforcement officer to see why we're not getting the results we're supposed to be getting. Bottom line on the issue is, I don't think you should be throwing more code enforcement out, officers out there. We don't need more of them. They're not doing the job anyway. What we need is more city employees working on the streets and the parks. That should be a priority, not going after the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiesma.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marcia Wiesma.
Welcome, Mrs. Wiesma.
Thank you. I am, have want the city to know that I have filed a formal grievance in regards to your last selection of the Measure Q Commission representative that was selected for District Four. This was the council meeting on April 7th. I believe the application had an invalid, incorrect information that makes this application totally invalid. A business address was used on the application instead of the residence address as required. Do we even know this person lives in District Three or Four? This address was used, it was 201 First Street. It is not a residence. It is a wonderful little coffee shop, Crave Coffee Shop. Please check it out. The, the owner, provider, is very friendly. This applicant has been using this same address for over 20 years with the city register who works for the voters, res, tellies. So, the city attorney, Matthew, clearly stated that this was going to be a no-conflict meeting in the position for me to serve, just because I was the spouse of a newly-appointed planning commissioner. It seems the council decided to ignore the fact that this was an invalid, incorrect application. They wanted to hurry it by. They would not take Matthew's suggestion. They would not take Mr. Williams's suggestion. So he bows out. Well, long story short, put him in. We agree that there is no conflict. We agree with Matthew, just like there is no conflict between Carmen and Mike Hernandez have been doing planning and zoning in city council for over 30 years. Michael has served on the street committee, and he's attended all meetings with Carmen. What this says and installs in faith and trust is they have respect and love for each other, the same as my husband and I. We are adults. We honor and we cherish Mike and Carmen's example, and we will do the same, given a chance. But, city council, forget it. You said no. Check your files and check with the, the grievance letter that you got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiesma.
Our next speaker is Mr. Eugene Batishi.
Welcome, Mr. Batishi.
Thank you very much. I have some great news, everyone that's been waiting for Fuzzy's Taco Shop at the 1523 East Main Street. Monday, this coming Monday, they will be having the, their grand opening and ribbon cutting at 2:00 in the afternoon. For those that may not be familiar with the address, those, if you've lived in town for a while, it's the old Sizzler Building, it's right next to Ramada, as well as the new Tesla station there. It's also, IHOP had opened there just over a year ago, all part of that building. Their training crew this week, and everything is, is all set to go, move forward. Also, two days later, on the 30th, there will be a ribbon cutting at 5:30 over at pit stop at 560 Victor, and that is behind, behind Walmart. They had gone through some changes there, and so they'll be having a ribbon cutting to let everyone know that they're open for business. And they're, and that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Batishi.
Our next speaker is Ms. Anna Fusey.
Welcome, Ms. Fusey.
Thank you. This is just to thank Barstow City, especially Tom Alva and his team, for all the upgrades they've done at the Barstow Center Center, lighting and some painting and some signs. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Fusey.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sonia Compton.
Welcome, Mrs. Compton.
Hello. Good evening, council and mayor. On April 7th, the council expedited a vote to establish the Measure Q Committee despite several proposed options that were, would have followed a more time to address concerns, particularly around District Four recommendation. The justification provided was that it was critical to move forward promptly in order to get a meeting scheduled. It has now been two weeks, and I have yet to receive any communication regarding scheduling of our first meeting. As of today, no date has been set, and again, no communication has been had. This raises legitimate concern. If urgency was the force driving behind pushing the vote through April 7th, why has there been no follow-through? Additionally, I did send Maribel an email on April 7th, inquiring about potential meeting dates, which has gone unanswered. At this point, I'm requesting a clear update on the status of the committee's first meeting and any relevant details we should be prepared for. Timely communication and follow-through are essential in assuring, ensuring this committee can operate effectively and with transparency. The meeting on April 7th was highly disappointing when it came to Measure Q, considering the two candidates that were on District Four. Ms. Wiesma is a solid candidate, a solid applicant. She asks solid questions at every meeting. I've been to meetings regularly since August. And Ms. Wiesma has also been to those meetings. Her and her husband also ask very valid, very pointed questions. They are obviously very diligent in their homework, and the fact that she was overlooked in consideration with another applicant is very highly disturbing, because I haven't seen him ask any questions at any meetings. So I would like to know what was the actual reason why Ms. Wiesma was overlooked for this position in, in District Four? And why was it pushed through if obviously you all had an issue with the two candidates and not put up for a re-applicant to apply for that particular district or as a whole? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Compton.
Our next speaker is Mr. E.T. Snell.
Welcome, Mr. Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is E.T. Snell, the website's www.ETSnell.com. Tex, I was at the bank the other day, and the security guard come up to me and he says, "Who's that young guy up there?" I just kind of looked, I said, "That guy's almost as old as me and you." He's just kidding, Tex. But you helped him change a tire and he didn't forget. So I'd like to kind of remind people of who Tex is, you know, why and why I support him. It's not because of your looks, Tex, I tell you that much. It's, it's because of what you do for the kids and what you do for the community. And that guy said he'll never forget that the rest of his life. He helped him change a tire out of Newberry Springs. So I want to just tell people that Tex is doing a good job. The council is going in the right direction, in my opinion. It took a lot of courage to get rid of the corrupt ex-police chief Espinosa, and it took a lot of courage, and I want to congratulate you in that, but that's closed hearing, so we don't get to hear all the stuff about it. I think to stop going in that direction, to, to keep going in that direction will take even more courage. I hope you realize that the hiring within the ranks of Barstow Police Department will not help us at all. We need to go outside, because I believe if the chief was corrupt, you know darn good and well, there's a good chance that a lot of the police officers were corrupt, and you can't polygraph them, so you don't know. And I'm not saying we have a bad police department, I'm just saying that they do a lot of illegal things, in my opinion. Now, hiring a, a police chief is going to be a tough decision. 18.3% are blacks in the community, so we've got a strong black presence in the, in the community. And my suggestion for police chief would be Clifton Harris, and he was able to make it tonight, and I hope some of you can sit and talk to him after the meeting. And, you know, I think to, that guy ran for sheriff twice, and I think he's, if anything, he's overqualified. So I'd like you to take a chance to get the, he ran for sheriff, like I said, several times, didn't get elected, but he didn't give up. And I think to hire him as the Barstow police chief, now I know I'm an ex-con, what am I doing suggesting a, a, a police chief? Well, you know, I did a lot of crime prevention, I was also the propagator of the mayor of Maywood being prosecuted, and I got a call from the DA the other day and said, "That case has been going on for nine years. Without my testimony, they're not going to have it." So just because somebody's an ex-con doesn't mean that they can't turn their life around and go in the other direction, and I've tried to. And I've tried to service the community and service the people. So I want to thank you all for your time, and let's keep going in the right direction. And when we do hire the police chief, hire outside. Thank you very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen. Is Mike okay?
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
Thank you. Barbara's all right, too? Barbara Rose? Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, mayor, council. Jim Brown, Barstow. I went to the Free Dump Day, and I got a commitment. It wasn't good, it was good. And they had a lot of employees there that helped. And I just wish that more people would have showed up. But it was good. And, but I do have a problem with BRTech, mainly the street sweeper. He came down two weeks ago on Wednesday. And he was doing twenty-five miles an hour. And he was just driving like he was driving his own personal car. And so, he went down. He did. He just drove down, came back. And so, I came out and I came out behind him. And he was coming up doing twenty-five miles an hour. The brushes wasn't up. The rollers was up. And he was driving in the middle of the road. He wasn't by the sidewalk. And so, when he got to Riverside Drive, the end of Riverside Drive, he turned, he made his left on Yucca. And he didn't put his brush down or nothing. When he got over by the apartments, he pulled over. Then that's when he dropped his brush and his stuff. And then he did his thing going by the sidewalk. But he didn't do a good job. He didn't do nothing on Riverside Drive. And I did call Tex and let Tex know about it. And he said that he would get hold of Chris Heldrich. But they didn't come back. So my recommendation is that every time y'all have a contractor, they do a good job for a little while. But then, they just forget about us. Forget about the people. And so, my recommendation is that y'all have street sweeper cleaners. Why don't you have your city people come and do that? And just do the job. One other thing is that this podium belongs to the people. It belongs to the people. And when we get to talk, when we leave this podium, we shouldn't be getting jumped. You know, we shouldn't get jumped by the police or whoever or code enforcement coming after us. That's wrong. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Our next speaker is Ms. Samantha Ryan.
Welcome, Ms. Ryan.
Hello. How are you guys? My name is Samantha Ryan. I just wanted to start off by saying we have plenty of people pointing out the changes that need to be made within Barstow. But how many doers do we have taking action? We have to be the change, okay? A little bit about myself. I served in the U.S. Army as police, military police. And I currently work in supporting emergency services. I created a Facebook group in the past called Stolen Barstow. And I just recently, last couple of months, created a Facebook group called Sunrise Past Estates Neighborhood Watch. Our neighborhoods thrive and we work together. And I'm here to encourage the community to start watch groups and utilize the social media as a tool to stay informed, to support our local law enforcement and to protect one another. And here's how the residents of Barstow can help, okay? Stay alert. Stay connected online. Report suspicious activity. Keep an eye out for your neighbors. Same way you would want people to keep an eye out for you. Support our local law enforcement. Light up your streets and get involved. Together, we can make Barstow safer for everyone. So I encourage you to join or start a community watch group. There's a couple of examples of very successful community watch programs that have been started in the United States. If you go to justice.gov, you can read about the Project Safe Neighborhoods. Neighborhood watch programs. These programs empower residents to collaborate and report suspicious activity and work with our local law enforcement to deter crime. Do we need more police officers? I would say yes, coming from law enforcement. But our police officers can't do everything by themselves. And just keep in mind when you're organizing these groups within your neighborhood to maintain ethical and legal boundaries within organizing these groups. Ensure members understand that they are not law enforcement. And these groups are not intended to promote vigilante actions or confrontation, but to create community transparency. Respect privacy laws when doing so and promote inclusivity and respect for all neighbors and fostering a safe and welcoming environment. It's all of our responsibility to police and protect our city. It's not just law enforcement. It's not just fire support services. It starts at home. And we've got to take care of our immediate area and our neighbors. Because there are only so many law enforcement officers. There's only so much budget to pay for so many officers. So, take care of home. Be the change that you want to see going forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
And our last speaker tonight is Ms. Virginia Brown.
Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. First of all, yes, I agree with Mr. Brown. It was kind of depressing to ride behind a street cleaner who didn't clean the streets. And it's not the first time. They come down to the drive and it's almost like we're the redheaded stepchild of Barstow. A lot of things the city's supposed to be doing don't get done when they come to the drive. They don't get done anywhere past the bridge once you cross the railroad tracks on Yucca. It's like they're forgotten. Case in point, code enforcement. They do. They come down on you hard. And I just paid a $200 fine for my container to them because I have a container on my property. I'm going to keep it. I paid the fine. But yet and still, I have a burned-out building across the street. The homeless pick through it daily and spreading it farther and farther out. Now people are dumping tires directly across the street. They're dumping trash across the street. And the piece of land that I asked all of you if one of you could put it on the agenda and the other one could second it and you guys could go ahead and discuss giving it back to us that we own, Mr. Silva said, "Wow, we don't have anything to discuss tonight." There was the space right there. We had the time. We could have done this discussion tonight, but we didn't. So I'm a little bit offended by that, but I'll get over it. I'm a big girl. What I am also offended about, though, is you're holding that property. It's yours. According to everything you believe, it's yours. But it's disgusting. There's weeds. There's trash. There's fence poles that are being knocked over. You guys don't ever come and clean it up. But it belongs to you, according to what I was told. Across the way, there's a hill on Yucca. It belongs to the railroad. I don't see the railroad being forced to come clean the trash, the sleeping bags, the horrible things I find over there, like dirty diapers and things that are dumped on that hill. And then they blow across the street, right down towards my house. Nobody's being forced to clean those up. But I can't have a container because my container is an embarrassment to the city. Wow. But those two parcels, they are just, I guess, God's gift to Barstow. Because nothing's getting done and no one's having to take care of it, including the one the city owns. So, my topics? Let's figure out, are we going to go ahead and fix the situation and give me back my little piece of land over there? And then I'll go clean it up. And you don't have to worry about it. Or are you guys going to come and clean it and start forcing the owners of all those other properties to do the right thing, too?
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
We have no more comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's time for staff reports. Mr. Heldrich, any staff reports?
None for me.
Okay, no staff reports. We'll move on to public safety updates. Anything from the police department? Mr. Arthur?
Yes, council and members of the public. The only thing I have is, it was already referenced into the agenda, is our Public Safety Fair that's coming up on May third. It's going to be, it's right here in front of the police department. The road will be closed off from Barstow Road to Second Street. We have, we'll have several law enforcement agencies, as well as victim advocacy units and stuff like that will be there. It's always a successful event. I think it's 10:00 a.m. It starts and it runs till 2:00 p.m. So we encourage everybody to come out. We look forward to a fun and productive day with the citizens. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything for the fire department, Mr. Cenaros?
Good evening, mayor, council and community. Just here to actually support PD and their endeavor with the Public Safety Fair. We'll have a presence out there. Unfortunately, we won't have our new fire engine out there just yet, just due to the fact that we did find some more at the issues and we did have to send that back to a local vendor to have those warranties remedied prior to us accepting the vehicle. But besides that, normal day-to-day operations within the fire district continue to seek other opportunities for cost recovery and revenue generation. We did have a meeting today with the Marine Corps Logistics Base as far as emergency management. The county and the state and myself met out at the base. Thought of some big-picture items, which could be a concern of us as far as emergency management. And the state is actually drafting a huge plan for logistic support for big events within the region. Nothing to add unless there's anything else of inquiry.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to council committee reports, starting with Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I attended the San Bernardino Transportation Authority Metro Meeting on April the tenth and the Desert Mountain Meeting on April eighteenth. And I would like our city manager to follow up on the closure of the bridge account. I would like, because we projected a certain amount and the way the allocation, so they reported that they are at the closing of the billing. And what has happened in other cities is when there has been an excess because it came under budget, and I don't know whether ours has or not, that there are other funds available that we can possibly use for our street. So I need to have that followed up by the city manager. I also got into the discussion of our other two bridges at the Desert Mountain. And there was communication, but I'd rather share that with the mayor and the city manager that we need to follow up. And hopefully, we will have our street committee meeting in May and we can have that information available for the public. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble?
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of things. I attended the Military Affairs Meeting last month, this month. And one of the significant things that they're asking for is those nonprofit organizations to take part in the Veterans Day that they're trying to set up for the, for this year, barbecue. It's a Veteran Day barbecue. And those that are interested in being on the committee to make plans on how that's going to act, please reach out to Renita or Jean to get the information on that to take part. The next Military Affairs Meeting will be on May thirteenth. And then the next Victor Valley Transit Authority Meeting will be on the nineteenth of May. And that'll be here at the Barstow Chambers. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams?
Homeward bound. We had a great discussion on what we're doing. Some of the suggestions of having a one-point of contact to make sure that we can get the information out to the homeless of getting help was discussed. I also want to say that every single day, there is something for homeless in the city of Barstow. Someone is feeding someone every single day. So, I am proud to serve on there with the mayor, Pro Tim. She's doing a great job of getting the information out there. We're looking forward to more improvements. But the single-contact information for the public is really one step going forward to making sure that the information's there. That's part of the problem, is not having the information. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Williams. And I want to thank Councilmember Hernandez for covering the two meetings that you did for me and following up on those issues. Had a lot of conflicts these last two weeks. I did attend the Barstow Chamber of Commerce Meeting. And the main thing there was just a presentation on the big project. Pretty much just a presentation from what we saw at the town hall that was put on a few weeks ago. So with that, we'll move on to business of the council. We'll start with Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the families that participated in our egg hunt on April the twelfth. Our park and rec were overwhelmed with individuals. And it started early because we had so many kids. And I want to thank our staff for doing a wonderful job with that program. Next, I would like to get a report on the Route sixty-six museum event. So I hope we have that on our next agenda. The other thing is, I want to thank staff, the smell of cannabis. Now, I have been more on the freeway these last two weeks than usual. And I didn't smell any. So, I think it worked, teamwork. So I wanted to thank staff. And I know I will thank our Mahavier quality for following up on that. So if anybody has the smell out there, let me know. But I haven't. And unfortunately, I'm super sensitive to cannabis. So I am glad to know, especially since that's our business area out there in Lenwood. Because we get a lot of visitors and we want a positive image for our community. And I already brought up the total cost of the bridge. But in regards to some of the comments, I think with code enforcement, I would like a follow-up on that to see what the complaints are and what has happened in regards to Measure Q. I think we should be deciding as to when that meeting is going to be. And I'm sure our city manager will be addressing that. The sweeper, I would like to let Mrs. Brown know you're not the only one. The sweeper, I watched also. And the water wasn't coming out and whatever, and I'm on Lillian. So it's, I think it's a community issue, not a neighborhood issue. So if we can check on that with BRTech, I would appreciate that. And I think, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble?
Thank you, mayor. I attended the Easter hop, whatever you want to call it, over at the Dana Park. Had an opportunity to take my grandkids over there. And they had a fantastic time over there. Very organized, a lot of people, well-attended. I met most of the council members over there as well, having a good time, just as much as the kids. We talked about the, some of the things, and Councilman Hernandez already brought them up. And I know Tex brought them up, too. Some of the things that are going on in the city and stuff, in your districts and stuff. If there's something going on in your district and you have questions, please reach out to your council member. Definitely reach out to your council member so that they can take a look into it. I know Mr. Ted brought up some things about what was going on in his district. Jim, I think, brought some stuff that was going on in his district. And those are things that we can address with staff immediately if there's something within the district that needs to be handled. So I would ask that if there's something that's going on in District Number Two, please reach out to me. But if there's something in the city as a whole. And I've already addressed some things with the Assistant Heldrich to take a look at that deals with some things down at Riverside Drive and also off of the mirrors on... that deals with some things down at Riverside Drive and also off of the mirrors on Barstow Road and the freeway. So there's some things that are still working. As soon as I get some answers, I will do a follow-up with those that brought up the issues and so forth. And again, the Veterans Day that they're doing, please reach out to Jean and Renita so that we can get that on, so that we can support our veterans this year, okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble.
I want to make sure that everybody understands up here that I support the fire and the police department. I had a meeting a couple of days ago, and it was confirmed to me that some people don't feel like I have their back. Just because I question and I go after things doesn't mean I don't support the city or staff. So to the fire and police, you've got my support. I want to make sure that's clear on that one. I need, I need a second on this one here. I want the city of council to be addressed of all the issues going on in our city. And it's not happening. And I'll tell you what, when I got to go to Facebook and hear the news of a little girl being hit, and I still don't have the information on it, it pisses me off beyond belief. I cannot believe there's rumors out there now that's putting the city in a position that says we're going to be putting up lights and everything else. This is how rumors and everything else gets going. And for me to hear about it, it's upsetting. What's more upsetting to me is that the school district, the day it happened, was updated immediately. And we sit out here looking at you with no answers. It's not the first time. It's ongoing. So if I can get a second for that, to take that to rules and policy, I appreciate it. Code enforcement. I have not talked to anyone about code enforcement. I was on Main Street. I was very upset what I found. The weeds were growing up. The sidewalk is busted. Someone from the public told me about the sidewalk. So here's the deal. I want all the code enforcement citations or write-ups against the city for the last six months. If they don't have them, I'm requesting that the code enforcement start writing up the city for their areas of neglect, including sidewalks, potholes, anything else that's a problem for our citizens. We should hold the city accountable, just like we're holding our citizens. If we're going to go after them, then we need to go after the city. And I'm hearing too much about code enforcement. If we're going to be the rule of the law, then we all got to pay the price. I know we can't fine our city. That's too bad. But we can write it up and we can report it and at least have public works go out and fix those areas. Animal control. I want to know how many dogs we're catching. And I want a monthly update. I want to see what we're doing out there. We had an incident where a little girl was chased by some dogs and fell and got hurt. Again, no update. I don't even know if any of the council member or the mayor knows about it. Well, I know the mayor does because I called him up upset. But that's ridiculous that we don't know what's going on in our own city. We're elected by the people. I think sometimes we forget that. Sometimes we forget, in Benny's words, "Who's the boss?" But we're going to figure that one out. Update meeting, first meeting on Measure Q. We definitely should have a date set. I don't know why we don't. The people bailed us out. The people gave us this measure to help us. We would be in trouble without it. And what do we do? We don't give them information. And far as Ms. Weisman, that was my decision on the conflict of interest. I told you that today. I am not running from it. I made it. I thought it was what was best for me as an individual, as a councilperson, to be responsible to the public. So I made that decision. You're going to be mad, be mad at me. I'm the one that did it. Council's the one that voted on it. But I felt it was a conflict of interest, and I still do. Caltrans, who are we talking? Our freeways look terrible. Weeds are all over the place, trash. Where is Caltrans? And who is talking to them? Because Caltrans, they need to clean up their area. So the city of Barstow, code enforcement, run on down there and write them up. Let's send it to them. If we can write up our citizens, we can write up the county, too, and everybody else around The medium on Rimrock, that has gotten to be a problem again. The past manager told me that it's scheduled. It's absolutely not scheduled. Drive by and take a look at that medium, and you will see how bad the weeds and everything else is. We're going right back to where we left from. But no one's writing it up. So code enforcement, write that one up. Let's see if we can get that going. For Easter egg hunt, you had six major events in the last two weeks for Easter egg. The public has asked for us to do something to have more events. We've got the safety fair coming up. We are hearing the citizens to give these things up, to have six major Easter egg hunts in two weeks is remarkable. We hear you, we understand you, and we care. And if we did not care, we wouldn't be talking about these things tonight. I did not work with Mr. Weisman on his issues down there. I'm the district person he's talking about. So we'll get that meeting set with Chris and code enforcement and get that going for you. And so I apologize for letting loose on what you needed.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Okay, yeah, I also made a lot of notes from public comments. I don't have answers for them tonight, but I'll be sitting down with the city manager. We will discuss them, and some council members have mentioned they're on those already. I also attended the Easter event that the city put on, on the 12th. And that was a great event. Spent a couple of hours or a few hours there. And then later that afternoon, went to meet some journalists at the Harvey House that were touring from Japan, representing the city there and communicating the best I could with them. And then last Saturday, the 19th, Councilmember Williams and I, our Assemblyman from the 34th District, Assemblyman Tom Lackey was in town. He had been invited for a mural tour by the group that does the murals. And we joined him. We spent a few hours there, touring, getting the history that the murals give out about Barstow. And had some good time to sit down and talk with our Assemblyman also. So with that, with no objection, by consensus of the members, without objection, that is, this meeting will be adjourned at 8:13 p.m.